... over tenth to order with a moment of silent reflection, please. Roll call? Mrs. Fee?
Here.
Mr. DeRose?
Here.
Mr. Croner?
Here.
Mr. Meyer? He is excused. Mrs. Milfeld?
Here.
Mrs. Randall?
Here.
Mrs. Weber? Here. Members of the Wauwatosi School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider the input in decision-making. The Board, excuse me, respects that individual limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of the Board comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items. Is there anyone that wishes to make a comment on the non-agenda, on a non-agenda item? Seeing none? May I have approval of the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Sharon.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fee. Is there any Board member who would like to ask for separate action on any item on the consent agenda? Seeing none? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda items? Seeing none? Roll call, please. Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. DeRose?
Yes.
Mr. Croner?
Yes.
Mrs. Milfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber? Yes. We will move into recognitions, please. Mr. Croner?
Thank you, Mrs. Weber. Bethel Asifa, East High School senior, was named a National Achievement Scholarship finalist. As a finalist, she will be considered for a National Achievement Scholarship. The National Achievement Scholarship Program is an academic competition established in 1964 to provide recognition for outstanding Black American high school students. For approximately 1,600 semifinalists, approximately 1,300 are expected to advance to the finalist level. All achievement scholar recipients will be selected from the finalist group on the basis of their abilities, accomplishments, and potential for success in rigorous college studies.
Wauwatosi East senior Tracy Johnson and Wauwatosi West seniors Natalie Mullins, Ellen Curtley, and Alexander Utteck were named semifinalists in the 57th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. These academically talented students have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some 8,300 National Merit Scholarships. To be considered for a Merit Scholarship Award, semifinalists must fulfill several requirements to advance to the finalist level of the competition. Stephen R. Trojan, West High School senior, was named a commended student, recognized for exceptional academic promise. Commended students placed among the top 5% of more than 1.5 million students who entered the 2012 competition by taking the 2011 preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation, or NMSC, a not-for-profit organization that operates without government assistance, was established in 1955 specifically to conduct the annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Scholarships are underwritten by NMSC with its own funds and approximately 500 business organizations and higher education institutions that share NMSC's goals of honoring the nation's scholastic champions and encouraging the pursuit of academic excellence.
And once more, we offer our congratulations and continued success with these young people who have worked hard to receive the honors that are read this evening. If we could move into reports to the Board, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bonds for the report on the summer school session. Good evening.
Good evening. Tonight, Mr. Anthony Bonds and Mrs. Dusel are here with myself to have a little conversation with you, a report on summer school 2011. Basically, the purpose of our summer school for 2011, 2012, of course, we're presenting on 2011, but I wanted to share 2012 with you as we look forward to this year's, or next year's, summer school. But really, the purpose has been for summer school to continue to enrich and provide an environment for students to advance and improve. That was true this year. It'll be true next year during summer school. Our main goal for this past summer was to increase the amount of credit courses offered at the high school level, along with just improving overall program enhancements. This year, as we look forward to 2012, we'll continue to increase those college, or excuse me, those high school credit opportunities. We're also looking at expanding into the area of STEM, technology, science, engineering, and mathematics for students at all levels, and also looking at, again, expanding some of our non-traditional access to our curriculum for our students.
And I'm just going to briefly discuss some of the information from this past summer. The summer school session was held between June 20th and July 29th. That was the six-week primary focus. But we also had additional classes, our Jump Start to K-4, as well as our Band Blast class. It was offered at various times, one of them being as late as August. But all of the programs were very successful and well-attended. The locations for the summer school program continues to be the East Campus, which consists of East High School and Lincoln Elementary School, and our West Campus consists of West High School and Eisenhower. The four principals that supported each building included Jean Hoffman, she supported East, Ed Price supported West, Lisa O'Malley supported Lincoln, and Jim Cosonis supported Eisenhower Elementary School. The times for the summer school program are listed. The fee structure for our summer school program remained consistent from last year. Our resident students, there's no fee for our resident students to participate in our summer school program, nor is there a fee for our Chapter 220 and open enrollment students. They also participate in our summer school program at no cost as well. Our non-resident students, there is a fee, and those are students outside of those two programs. There was a $500 charge for high school credit classes, and if a student wanted to receive a half a credit, the price for that was $250. And that was a difference because in years past, it was actually $500 even just for a half a credit. So we reduced the fee structure for non-resident students. And as you can tell by the next slide, our enrollment continues to increase. There was an 8% increase over last year. We had 3,262 students participate in our summer school program, which was 250 additional students from the previous year, which, again, just shows the strength of our program. Students and families see it as definitely an opportunity, and we have always viewed our summer school program as an extension, a true extension of our school year, and we provide students with a lot of opportunities. And I think as we continue to look at adding new courses, I think we'll have additional students even enroll as well. With 3,262 students participating, that's roughly 45% of our general population, and so that shows a lot of support for our program. And if you look at our enrollment growth, courses taken, over last year, we had a 10% increase. There were 9,290 courses taken, meaning that not only were students taking classes, but they also took more classes. So students just didn't take two classes, they may have taken last year three classes or more. So there's definitely an interest and a support for our summer school program, and I think we, as a district, benefit tremendously when we provide our students with that opportunity.
In terms of the new courses we offered, we offered a host of classes for credit at the high school level. Advanced Composition, Advanced Communication and Public Speaking, Algebra, Algebra II with Trig, Art Foundation Semester One, Biology, British Literature, Business Personal Finance, Chef Foods One, Chemistry One, Creative Writing, Economics Online, Forensic Science, Geometry, Independent Living, Physical Education Choice, Sewing for Fun and Fashion, and World Literature. We also added courses for enrichment, and those courses are ACT Prep, and again, this is at the high school, ACT Prep, College Application Essay Writing, English Language Learner Enrichment, Non-Fiction Book Club for Grades Nine and Ten, Non-Fiction Book Club for ages or grades 11, 12, Pre-Engineering, Math Enrichment, and Targeted Development, and also research writing papers.
And if you would like to look at some data on that, your work provided some information in your packet with regards to the number of students who participated in each class, as well as a breakout of our non-resident students and Chapter 220 students. So if you would like to get that.
So Linda Dusel's going to talk a little bit about the special education support, that that continues to be something that we continue to grow and build in our program?
Hi. During the school year, I'm a special ed teacher over at Jefferson Elementary, and in the summertime, I help to coordinate special services through our summer school programs. Technically, Individualized Education Plans, or IEPs, are written for the school year. They do not apply to summer. But because we want to provide a quality program for all students in the summertime, we do our best to help our students be successful in the summer programs. Here you see listed some of the goals of our summer services. First of all, to provide students with disabilities full access to the summer school program. Second, to provide skill maintenance and minimize regression of skills. Third, and I think this is critical, provide support to high school students who are in need of credit recovery. You'll see in the next slide that we are able to support many high school students who are taking a class, again, maybe who have not passed it during the school year, and are trying to stay on track for graduation. So I think it's very important that we support those students in the summertime and keep them on track. And then finally, we do have some students who are provided an extended school year as recommended by their IEP team decisions. Here are the numbers for summer school. This past summer, we served just under 200 special needs students enrolled in general summer school classes. Since I started summer school, this number has doubled, tripled, and quadrupled. So our students are enrolling, and they're meeting with success in the summer program. Then there's a breakdown of numbers for you. Elementary schools, JK through second, 48 students, grades three through seven, 87, and high school students, 58 students. In addition to this, we have about 30 to 35 special needs students who are enrolled in self-contained special classes from early childhood through high school in the summer program. So you can probably imagine what a planning task it is to try to get information about 200 students out to teachers and support staff so that they are able to meet their needs in summer classes. It's a big undertaking, and it requires a lot of pre-planning and communication with teachers and students and parents. Next slide. These are just a listing of some of the services provided in the summer. Many students with IEPs probably don't have the exact kind of service in the summer as they do in the school year, and like I said, we aren't required to provide those services. But these are the types of things we do provide. Mostly, it's consultation, collaboration. With permission, we share IEP information regarding accommodations to all teachers and support staff. Some students require some teacher assistant support directly. Some students are grouped in small groups to receive some academic instruction at their level. Teachers are provided with alternate materials. Many students are assisted with class-to-class transitions. You can imagine what a feat it is for first, second, and third graders moving from class to class, and then some have to cross the street, 76th Street, or cross the parking lot at West. That's hard even just for a typical student, but if you have special needs, that's especially challenging. So we try to coordinate all of that so that no student is left to their own devices. We also provide support for behavior intervention and crisis management. There are many students enrolled in the summertime who have individualized healthcare plans. So I work with Sally Ropie to provide emergency training at every site. That's training for seizure, seizure medication, nebulizers, G-tube feedings. All of that happens in those six weeks of summer school. We help with parent contacts, supervision for pickup and drop-off, and then the last of all, there's some services that we list here for high school students. Assistance with test-taking, support for report-writing, and this year, we were able to monitor grades much more closely because of Power School. So we could intervene with a student that we can see their grades aren't looking very good. We can go and meet with that teacher right away and provide support to help that student be successful in that high school class. So these are the kinds of things that the special ed support staff provide during summer school.
And again, the next slide, you will see a breakout of participation across the district, as well as throughout the community. It's pretty spread out in terms of our feeder schools and participation, as well as the number of students who are from our private parochial school. We have 52 students who participated in summer school as well. With 85 of those students, they didn't indicate a school that they attend during the school year, and those are some of the things that we're going to make sure we clean up next year to make sure we have better and better data. And that's something that we have been able to accomplish over the last couple of years is improve our data collection and making sure we have some accurate information. So that information is there with regards to the 3,000 students that participated. And to close, the focus for the 2012 school year, we're going to continue to work with the Reg Department and Technology Department to improve and grow the summer school program. We're also going to continue to work with them with regards to improving our customer service and our day-to-day operation of summer school. Summer school has become, as you can tell, a large operation, not only to manage, but to make sure that we manage successfully, and it requires a lot of people and a lot of support. And so we're going to make sure that we look at that and look into how not only the Technology Department, but other departments can assist us. And I would like to say that various departments have definitely participated this year, especially with the help of Student Services, looking at how, again, they provide support for our students with special needs and student learning with, looking at how we offer courses for summer school students. This year had an opportunity, or this past year had an opportunity to enroll in some of those classes or express an interest earlier in the year, and that's something that we are also looking at doing again this year to get some more information about classes that we can definitely run in the summertime. And then we're also going to look at some STEM opportunities for science, technology, engineering, and mathematics at all levels, and expand opportunities for non-traditional learning environments, i.e. distance learning or online instruction. So we will be looking at expanding those opportunities as well.
And just on a final note, I want to go back, look at our data, and I think it's very telling, as Anthony talked about earlier, the participation of our students and families in our Wauwatosi summer school program has continued to grow. And that's because, number one, it's part of what we decided to do as a board, wanted to focus on, wanted to move forward with. Phil's been very supportive of that, along with student learning and collaboratively working with Student Services and Technology. So it's a testament to the organization, and so I think it's something that we certainly should celebrate. So again, fine job for all the people that do the daily things and for you to help, you know, lead the path for us. Questions?
Sharon?
I have a question on the focus for 2012 and the piloting new learning environments. I'm curious as to what are some of your ideas to do that? Is it just limited to hybrid courses, or is it, are you thinking of timing of courses?
Yeah, we haven't really started those discussions. It's just something that we now have to focus on, so it's about time, kind of in November, we start getting together, and again, we start ramping it up and having those conversations. So we want to be open, yet we want to be strategic to know how we can support that online learning or that hybrid learning. So again, this last summer, we did Economics Online. That was a kind of a pilot for us to put our toe in the water, so we'll continue to look at expanding those opportunities. But again, we want to keep our minds open so that we can not only support the students, but also be able to support them with the technology we have too. So there has to be that happy balance.
I just want to comment that we had surveyed the students, and the survey of the student body showed that they were very interested in online opportunities, but also they were interested in different scheduling options. So this year, we did try that, like we had some very intense courses where they didn't take them over the full six weeks, but they went more hours during the day, and that was a result of feedback from students. And we actually had students elect to take some of those different kinds of options. So we'll continue to explore that, and that was driven by a survey that we gave our student body to determine if we should look at some different delivery models.
Great, thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Fee?
First off, thank you very much. I appreciate both the efforts that you put into summer school, which, you're right in your comment, it's become quite a big operation. And also, I appreciate the report so that we do follow what's going on. But speaking of surveys, I was wondering, do you survey the parents as to their summer school experience and what worked, what didn't work, and what they might like to see in summer school as we develop new programs?
In years past, we have, but this year, we have not issued a survey out. I'm not sure if, have you discussed doing that? Probably not too late to still probably get some information. Obviously, the sooner the better, but it's not too late to do that. But we have in the past, and that's how we received some of our information, and every year, we learn from what our community is telling us, and then we try to make adjustments the next year to put those enhancements in place or to provide those opportunities or offerings for students. So we have in the past, we just have not done, completed one this year.
Thank you.
I could add to that, that we do survey the staff, the summer school staff, and ask for suggestions and ask for positive things too. So that helps in looking at what's working and what's...
Thank you.
Do you have your hand up, Sharon? Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. That leads me to another question. We were talking about staffing, and oh, I wanted to say thank you so much for the students with disabilities. That's a very important program that we have in the school district and over the...
I would say it's the best in the state with summer program, really.
Yeah, that's wonderful, wonderful to see. But as far as staffing, how is that going? Are there, is there a lot of interest within our district, or are these educators from outside of our district? How is that going?
Well, over the years, it continues to increase, and last year, we did increase in terms of the overall percentage of our current staff being employed in the summertime or looking for work. I don't want to give a guesstimate, but I want to say roughly 55, 60% were Wauwatosi employees, and it has increased over the years, but I don't have any concrete data on that right now, Sharon.
I'd say for special ed staff, it's almost all TOSA teachers and assistants.
Yes, Mr. Croner?
Thank you. This has been and continues to be a very impressive program. It's very popular. One special interest I have is how successful we are with the kids that are doing credit recovery or need remedial help, and I'm glad that you mentioned that. Do we have any measure of, like the interventions that you talked about? Do you know, is it more successful than the students have been in the past that are retaking a course, if there's intervention on your part? How's that working?
I don't think we had the ability to track the grades as well as we did this past summer with Power School, and at least for the special ed students, that's, those are the students I looked up. So I don't know overall if there's, there's probably not some type of...
I think when we look at using technology, we want to continue, again, last, this past summer school is the first year that we really, really focused on using the technology that we had in Power School, but we know that we have to continue to work with our Technology Department to continually find ways to collect data on students. So it is part of what we're going to do and what we're focused on, but we don't have the intervention data that we're trying to pilot and collect at the school levels that we're doing now as we're piloting things. But certainly, it is an area we can expand.
I'm just going to add to that really quickly, that we are doing a study that we are collecting at our elementary level for our reading, at the elementary level. We're actually in the process of putting the data together now, but we're looking at students, their MAP scores in the spring of the year compared to their fall MAP scores to look to see if they were able to sustain the score or showed growth, because we typically see fallback over the summer. So we are trying to put some of that data together at the elementary level to inform our reading program that we offer.
And we also could, it would probably be easy to do, is to get some data on our recovery, number of students who signed up for a class and stayed with it and received credit. I'm pretty sure they'll wait for us to provide that information as well, probably along, you know, at the same time when that other data is being shared. So we know exactly who signed up for which courses, and we should know, we should be able to find out how successful they were and who received credits at the end of the summer as a result of it. So that data should be easily accessible.
So I've been thinking, I know it's difficult to pilot programs during the school year a lot of times, to fit them into schedules, but the summer program's a perfect place. If you have kids with certain deficits, pilot a couple of different programs that might target those deficits, and then see how successful those particular kids are during the school year. I mean, this might be a really great place, I've always thought, to get at-risk kids back on the right track and hopefully rescue, you know, where they are. So I'm glad to see that you're thinking along those lines. My other question is just a timing issue. I remember from working through catalogs that there were a lot of conflicts, and I'm really happy that you're adding a number of courses, but in doing so, will you be able to lengthen the school day or do a way so if students want to take, high school students multiple courses, that it'd be easier for them to fit them in, or how will we work with that? Is there a funding issue associated with that, or...
Not necessarily. It's more of a convenience issue and interest issue. Students, I mean, most high school students, they, some of them want to pick up an extra course in the summertime, but, you know, to sit in either a three-hour class, or, excuse me, a two-and-a-half-hour class or a five-hour class, and that's only two classes, and then to say, okay, let's offer something later in the day, we're not sure what the interest level where it lies. And so that's something that we can always explore, and again, that is something that we will be looking at again and get some information from our students if they would participate in something, or will take something that's offered at that time. You know, we'll get their interest level, and then, just like last year, we'll put in a booklet and see if students take advantage of them. All the courses that Bill listed or that is listed here, we offer them, and as you can tell by the numbers, not all of them actually ran this summer because there was lack of enrollment or lack of interest, or if there was only one or two kids that signed up, then we ended up dropping or canceling class because it becomes inefficient at that time. So we're always looking for those opportunities.
I guess it's hard to know whether, if some, there were sections from 1:30 to 3:30 and 8:30 to 10:30, I guess it's hard to know whether that would change the enrollment by doing that sort of thing.
And one of the areas that we've gotten a lot of feedback on students is that if we could offer more flexibility in terms of not having to be there every day because of band camps, because of different summer programming or travel that our students do. So we're looking at how do we begin to offer that online opportunity, or at least that hybrid opportunity, to help to meet some of that need. So students can still access the curriculum. They don't necessarily have to be there for five days a week, and so those are things that we're going to look at and discuss this year, too.
One last question. When you talk about adding new courses for credit from the high school, are those just transferring courses that we normally offer during the school year to summer, or are those new courses to the district as well?
No, those are traditional courses that we do offer during the school year, so our plan is, we want to be able to keep the integrity of the curriculum similar or the same, so...
Although, we did offer to forensic science and a British Lit that are, were new curriculum for summer school. So we did pilot those two this summer and had enough attendance to run them both.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any further questions? Yes, Mary Jo?
Yes, Mary Jo.
I'll just add my anecdotal information from staff and parents and students who are very appreciative, again, of the opportunities and how well things were run. And I know that your leadership makes a big difference. And Mrs. Dusso, thank you so much for increasing those opportunities for special needs kids. Are you seeing, is it a particular level that's responding more than another, the younger kids or the older kids or the differences from prior to this?
Well, I think you see from the numbers, it's pretty well distributed. I think as more, especially at the high school level, as more high school kids find out that they can have some help in the summertime as well. I think that would help enrollment. Also, we're looking at, you know, we're looking at improving every year. So we're looking at maybe adding some more intensive kind of services for middle school students.
Okay.
Because there's, it's a little lacking at the middle school level.
Okay. It seemed like it was primarily younger children that took advantage before.
Right. And then the courses offered at the lower grades are much smaller classes and intervention-oriented to begin with. So those classes are perfect for students who have disabilities. But then as they get older, those classes don't carry on. So we're looking at more options for middle school students.
That's, that's great. Thank you.
There's a fair amount of private or parochial school in Romans. Pilgrim is listed again. Is that, is there a pilgrim Lutheran outside of Wauwatosa? There is no longer a pilgrim Lutheran in Wauwatosa.
Yeah, Manominee Falls. It is from Manominee Falls, the one that's located in the Falls.
Could you take just a moment to state where we are drawing from, which I think is a real gift to those young people that can take advantage of summer school in Wauwatosa?
We have the, that slide up again for you where we are drawing.
But where are they from? We see names, but what communities are they from? We mentioned, or you mentioned Manominee Falls. I know there's some from Brookfield here.
Correct. Elm Brook, Brookfield, Milwaukee, Beaver Dam.
From Beaver Dam?
Yes, there was a student from Beaver Dam who participated. Elm Grove. And you have to realize that also, the enrollment information is what we pull to give us this data. So students have an opportunity themselves to state where they are coming from and the community that they live in. So that's why over there, if you see where it says, "No school indicated," eighty-five students. So there are still gaps in the system with regards to how we really get all that information. That number has been reduced drastically over the last couple of years. With the introduction of Power School this year, we were able to clean a lot of that up. I forget the exact number last year, but I want to say I know it was a couple hundred students that didn't have a identification with regards to their school. But we have, with the installment of Power School, improved that data collection. So they are coming from a variety of places and, you know, they see us as a place where they can take advantage of a good opportunity.
I think we are, or you are to be commended for this opportunity for the young people.
Thank you. I don't do it by myself. I mean, it's a, it's a lot of people involved, so I want to thank them as well.
Thank you. Special needs parents, those are the ones I would particularly like to hear from if, how we are serving their child and is there some way we can make it even more exciting, more beneficial to a child? Because I know their needs change constantly. So that would be interesting, I think, to interview or have some type of survey with them at one time. And what is Band Blast, please? Do you know, is there...
It's just a great opportunity for, it's a program that our, I want to say fourth or fifth grade band directors provide for either, I want to say fourth or fifth grade, I forget exactly which grade level. But it's a band experience. I know Dr. Erdos, some participated in the summer, but it's a, I think of it as a camp during the summertime around four or five days. And they come and they are taught various lessons and then at the end, they provide a huge performance and students take advantage of it and they find it very successful. The band directors find it very successful and a huge interest, as you could tell by the numbers, from the families and the students. So think of it as a band camp and it's held at McKinley every year in August.
As a parent, do you have any comment from your child?
He had fun and he learned a lot.
Is he going to continue with his band?
To be determined. He's in it this year.
Good, good. And he's at Eisenhower?
Yes.
Please come back with an exciting report for us in the future. Is there any community comment on the summer school program?
Mrs. Weber, I just want to make a comment that I think it's important to note that we, with our current administrative structure of the summer school program, it has not changed the leadership piece. Mr. Bonds has done a great job, but he also has another full-time job, which is being an elementary principal. We've been exploring different ways of trying to manage it. It has grown tremendously and yet we maintain that same structure. The amount of resources in HR to hire, excuse me, that many teachers has created some challenges. So we're, we're exploring different ways to manage it. So you may be hearing something more about that.
You bring it up, but I've not heard one complaint from Mr. Bonds. He always is operating with a smile and that's a compliment for all that you're doing.
Thank you.
Not based on his complaints.
If we may move on, please, to the recreation department, Mr. Beatty? Thank you. Each one of you, please.
I'd like to thank you once again for the yearly opportunity to come before you and give you a recap of our recreation department's summer programs. Well, while the summer school program certainly serves the youth in the community and the recreation department does as well, we also have the role of providing recreational opportunities for entire families, youth through senior adult. And as we page through the report, you'll see pretty much a recap of all of the various programs that, that we do offer. The format of the report is, the first part is, the first page is just an overview. It has some information about budget and so forth. The next couple of pages are capsule summaries of each of the various programs and then a summary of the evaluation that we did and the registration totals for the summer. So I'd like to make just some brief comments about the various parts of the report and then open it up for questions that you might have. By way of general comments, I would say the one word that comes to mind when I, when I think about our programming this summer and then over the last couple of years is consistency. The community, I think, has come to expect a certain level of service from the recreation department and we try very hard to meet that. And not only to come up with new ideas and new things to try, but also to maintain those programs that have been with us in the community for thirty-plus years. People have grown to expect those and like I said, we do, I think we do a pretty good job of maintaining those and keeping them available to folks. Consistency in program registrations, numbers, revenue that we take in and the evaluations that you'll look at, and again, I'll talk specifically about those things. In terms of revenue, the department takes in about $550,000 as general program revenue just for the summer. That's up about $20,000 from, from 2010. The registration plan, or the planning for the program really starts in student learning and student services and the summer school staff, you know, are very aware of this. It's, the fall goes by very quickly, holidays come and then we're back to really putting together the plan and the booklet for the following summer. So it really comes upon us very fast. So program decisions and so forth, I know for our department and I'm sure for summer school, are really made now in the, in the fall so that we can really get that stuff implemented and ready to go for the booklet preparation that happens shortly after the first of the year. Chris Sarah is the administrative assistant in our office that handles putting together the multitude of information to put in that booklet. She also manages the registration software, which is a complete separate entity and that's, you know, very tedious work. And I really have to give her kudos because with the literally thousands of different sections of classes and courses, both recreation and summer school, that's a, that's a real taxing job and she does a wonderful job of keeping it, keeping it on time and keeping it accurate. So to mention that to her. That first day of registration back in March, we processed over 6,500 individual program registrations, both summer school and recreation department. So I think that's pretty remarkable. It's, it's certainly something that, that is always, we're always looking to improve it, to make it faster, working with the technology department to make sure that, you know, everything we're doing from that standpoint is done properly so that the experience for people that are going online and registering happens without, without delays and without problems. Going down the list of programs, one of the, the main focus, one of the, the main focus, I think, in programming this summer was implementing a series of programs and activities for the new Tosa pool. As, as I'm sure you're aware, the recreation department was, was in charge of doing the programming, the lessons and activity programs. We had a terrific, a challenge to put that together. Kristin Murphy, our aquatics coordinator, worked long and hard to put together a schedule of activities that would not only integrate the programs that we've had in the past at East, West, Longfellow and Whitman, but also to try some new things at the new pool. That pool, because of the way it's built with the zero depth, gave us an opportunity to do some lessons for really young children where they could come and attend without their parents. In the past, our, our lessons at Longfellow for that age group always involved a parent getting into the pool with, with the child. So that zero depth really worked well. And I think we had, as we go through the registration totals, I think there was about a hundred children that took part in those, those new lessons. There were also exercise classes on deck, early morning things, yoga classes, physical fitness boot camp that was held at the pool. I also took advantage of some of the trails that are behind the pool area at Hoyt Park. Challenge for us, a big challenge was to try and not lose the numbers of swimmers that we had in our lesson program. And as, as you can see by the numbers in that registration report, there's, I think we are up close to 200 swimmers in the instructional part of, part of our program. And that's those general red cross lessons. So that was a real positive for us. We also picked up a large number of swim club members this summer because in the summertime, they have swim meets mostly at outdoor pools. It's called the long course season. In the past, we've never had a pool to practice long course. And so with the new pool, obviously, they have the facilities to do that. So we had several swim team practices scheduled there each week. Moving down the list of programs, Day Camp is one that I, I wanted to mention again and seems like it's a yearly thing that I bring this one up. It's such a tremendous program. It's one that when I started years and years ago, it was sort of in its infancy. I think it had been around for about four or five years, Camp Arrowhead. We've expanded it to Camp Wauwatasee for the really young children. We've kept the Camp Arrowhead portion and added a component adventure camp for the middle school students. And all three of those virtually fill each summer. And I think it's really a testament to the quality of that program because it's an all-day program. So they really have to work around summer school schedules, sports camps and other activities. There's a lot of competition for their time. But people value that program and have valued it over the years and so we still get really good numbers. The fitness classes I mentioned, some of the ones that I highlighted were the on-deck things that, that occurred at the Tosa pool. The Learning Never Ends program, that's a twice-a-year program that we have at West High School. We had about 200 and, over 200 adults, 208 that attended our event last April. Our next Learning Never Ends is coming up next week, October 18th at West High School. I think we have right now about 250 adults that are signed up for 21 workshops that evening. There's still plenty of room, so I want to put a little plug in for anybody that happens to be listening or watching here to, to sign up for that. I failed to mention, up above driver education, we still, one of the important things that we provide for students in our district is a driver education program. I want to, at this meeting, commend our, our outgoing retiring driver education coordinator, Tom Trepechek. Tom has coordinated that program through our office since 1990. Prior to that, he was, he was teaching in the system when the program was housed at both East and West High School. So he did that in our office for 21 years and did a remarkable job teaching students how to drive. He is widely known in the community by forty-year-old adults now as the guy that taught them how to drive. And he still is coming back and teaching, you know, a few classes for us, but, but we miss, we miss his, his overall coordination of that program. Pat McKeon is the, the new coordinator that started this fall and he's doing a wonderful job getting, getting assimilated to that new responsibility. Safety Town on the next page is another program that we have, I think this is probably about ten years that we took over the operation of Safety Town. The women's club in Wauwatosa had run that for many years and with declining numbers, it was a difficult thing for them to keep going, but it's a valuable program. So we kept, kept it up. We usually fill or come close to filling that program. One of the things that I mention each year, that's a really, I think a tremendous part of that program is the young, the opportunities for young students, middle school age students to volunteer and get experience working with young, young children. I think we had about eighty, eighty teenage volunteers working in that program this summer. So that's, that's always kind of a side benefit of, of running that is the experience that they get. Softball Leagues for Adults, we run leagues that, that serve over a thousand players. We play games at Whitman and Hart Park. All of our athletic facilities in our district facilities are managed by our Buildings and Grounds Department and I really want to give them kudos and especially Eric Schmalt. Eric is on Bruce Johnson and Jerry Krieger's staff and kind of heads up that ground crew. So any of the athletic venues, soccer fields and baseball diamonds, his crew basically has a hand in making those really the tremendously kept facilities that we have. Our softball players in our leagues, our adult players comment all the time that Whitman in particular is one of the best places that they play. So. Sports Camps is a model that we have been following for many years with our athletic departments at the high schools where we get high school coaches to run programs, camp programs in the summer for the various sports specialties that they have. We share the revenue with them, so it gives them an opportunity to make a little extra money for their teams. This summer, approximately $16,000 was paid back through the athletic departments for the individual sports. One of our, one of our major goals with the expansion of summer school is the summer adventure camp program or club program that students can and families can take advantage of where they can attend summer school from 7:30 to 11:30 in the morning and then the recreation department will pick them up at 11:30. And if they require care all the way through six o'clock for working parents, we will provide that for them. That program, again, we've expanded it year after year. I think we expanded it by a little, a little bit this year. We had 120 spots at both East and West, so a total of 240. And the average daily attendance was around 65 between East and West. We also expanded that program. One of the things we heard from the parent evaluations last year was that the six weeks of summer school was great, but the parents that were working were wondering what they might be able to do with their children that first week that school let out and then the week after summer school ended. So we expanded the program to eight weeks to pick up those, those two weeks as well. And that was, I guess I would say it was moderately successful. We didn't get the, the huge numbers that I thought we would, but for the families that did take advantage of it, I think it was, it was something that they really appreciated. The tennis program, I guess I especially want to mention this because it's one of the programs that we saw really a big increase in, in the lesson program this summer. It's about a 25% increase in the numbers of young people that took advantage of lessons this summer. We're up to around 270 students, which I think is pretty remarkable because we had a challenge this summer with the West High tennis courts being out of, out of commission. And I'm actually looking forward to next summer, having even more students avail themselves of those new courts at West. If you haven't seen them, which I'm sure you probably have, they are really beautiful. If you haven't seen them, which I'm sure you probably have, they are really beautiful and state-of-the-art. And again, the Buildings and Grounds staff, working with the tennis coaches, put together a fantastic facility at West. The evaluations that you'll see, generally over seven-hundred responses. I think last year we had about seven-hundred-and-sixty, this year we had about seven-hundred-and-ten. You know, still a high number of people that we're hearing from. We ask them four basic questions. We try and get, you know, basically just earmarks in terms of how we're doing. I think I mentioned this to you last year. What we're really striving for is to be a hundred percent positive with those basic questions that we ask. In some areas, you always fall a little bit short. But the most valuable thing I think we get out of those evaluations are the comments. We literally have pages and pages of comments that people put down, suggestions for different ways of doing things and what they liked, what they didn't like with programs. And so, that's probably the most valuable thing that comes out of that. You can page through and you can look at those. Again, the response is very consistent with what we've seen in recent years. I think that, in general, Wawatosa families have a lot to choose from in the summer. I think between summer school, between recreation department, between the new Tosa Pool, between other agencies located in Wawatosa that provide programming, I think there's really a wealth of things that families can take advantage of. Our challenge the last few years, as summer school has expanded, is to remain competitive and to get representative numbers in participation. And I think if you look at the last couple pages of the report, you'll see that, again, it's very consistent with what we've seen in the past. Finally, I would just like to sort of end by saying that not only the recreation department, but the summer school program and all that we do in the district is really a result of a lot of different departments working together, whether it's student services, the curriculum office, technology, Buildings and Grounds, Recreation Department. I think that's one of the remarkable things about working in this district is the cooperation that you get amongst those departments. And I think that's what makes our program so strong. So, you don't often get the opportunity to thank those folks, but saying it at a public meeting, I think that's a real strong part of our district, the way those departments work together. So, with that, I'll open it up for any questions that you might have.
Seeing none, I have a couple. Safety Town still conducted at Wilson School?
Yes.
And we are able to accommodate almost all the entries or?
This year, we actually had some spots left over in the afternoon, if I recall.
But I'm glad you mentioned the opportunities for the young people in the community that can help with that program. Playground numbers, you didn't mention numbers for the playground operation. I don't know if that was in our packet.
It is, it is in there. It's listed. You'll see that the number, I think, was down from about seven-hundred-something to six-hundred-something. It's a small drop. We're actually noticing, probably in the last five years, I've noticed just a small decrease every year. It's going down. And it's not, the morning program is still really strong. You know, we have the morning program, three mornings a week, the Wonder Kids program for the real young kids, four-year-old kindergarten, five-year-old kindergarten. And playground leaders actually operate that program. So, we still get real strong enrollments there. Those playground leaders also stay in the evening and they run various programs. One of the biggest is T-ball, a lot of the youth softball. And then the middle of their day is that general playground program for kids. We thought that we would, a couple of years ago, again, with the expansion of summer school, we thought that we'd be getting more kids at Eisenhower and Lincoln because we tried to market it, those two schools in particular, as a place where older students that maybe didn't want to be signed up or the parents didn't want to sign them up for the summer adventure club could go. Because playgrounds is, it's structured, but children can come and go as they please. But it hasn't really worked out that way. So, we are losing a small number of enrollment or participation each year, it seems, with that program. I think it's just a result of there's a lot to do in Wawatosa, and this summer especially. Hot afternoons, hot asphalt playground, Tosa Pool, you know, I mean, it's a, I think it's a pretty easy decision for most young people.
There's a lot offered in our community.
There is.
One thing I'd like to comment just a bit further on is, you mentioned Eric Schmold. It is so exciting and rewarding to watch the, how Eric works with our young college students who are trained under him. Many of them come back year after year. And maybe Mr. Price can say something about it, but that, I think, is an unhidden treasure we have here, how the training that he gives to those young men, and they take it very seriously. I think it's all young men. I've not seen a lady on any of the work, and Dave is giving, maybe you can mention that in your report after a while. But I think we need to thank Eric for that also and the people that work with those young adults. Thank you, Rick, for all of your people for the program that we have here in Wawatosa.
You're welcome.
If there is no other comment, we can move on in the agenda, if I can find it. What number are we on, please? Let's see, we've got that student services, third Friday enrollment, okay.
Hi, tonight I'm going to go through the enrollment that we currently have for the two thousand eleven-twelve school year, based on our third Friday, third Friday count this past September. I'm going to start with, just giving the total district numbers. This is every student that's currently enrolled in the school district. We have seven-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-two students in the district. Breaking that down according to grade level, at the elementary level, we have three-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-two students. Middle school, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-sixty-nine students. And then at the high school, two-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-one. So, there's comparative data based on our overall complete enrollment. Next series of slides that I'm going to share with you are the district enrollment without our county programs. This year, we had, on the third Friday, we had a hundred-and-seventy-four students who were enrolled in our special county programs, and we get membership funds for those students. So, taking out that hundred-and-seventy-four students in the county programs include Plank Road School, the Detention Center, River Hills and Children's Hospital. So, if you take those students out of our counts, our total numbers are seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight students overall. At the elementary level without county, you don't see a big dip because there's not many elementary-age students that are serviced by county. So, you see a small dip, three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-five. Middle school, one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-seven. And the majority of the students served in the county programs are high school students. So, that number changed to two-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-six. The next series of numbers I'm going to go through are the resident enrollment, taking out all the students that are currently attending our district who are not residents and leaving just our resident students in here. Third Friday count has our resident enrollment at five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-six students, an increase of about sixty, right under sixty students from last year of resident enrollment overall. Breaking it down again according to grade level, at the elementary level, two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty-eight. Middle school level, one-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-three. And then residents at the high school level, one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-five students. Next series of slides I'm going to share with you are the non-resident students and their enrollments in our district. So, for open enrollment on third Friday, we had a total of one-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-nine students overall attending our district through the open enrollment program. If you break it down according to grade level, we have five-hundred-and-thirty at the elementary level, two-hundred-and-seventy-five at the middle school level, three-hundred-and-twenty-four at the high school level. Another way that students can attend our school that, who aren't residents, is students who are currently attending our school under an additional year tuition waiver. So, those are families, our students who were enrolled in our district after the period of open enrollment. They were initially, they were resident students in our district and moved out of the district after the open enrollment period. So, they were allowed to continue in our district last year through a tuition waiver. This year, they're allowed to continue in our district through a tuition waiver until the period of open enrollment, and then they would transition into open enrollment. We also had one student who was attending through a nine-week waiver program who will become a resident. I believe that student has become a resident. So, it's a student that either there was a mortgage or a lease that was signed, the family pays tuition, and then we reimburse them the tuition after nine weeks when they verify that they've moved. Then our final, our last non-resident program that we have in the district is our Chapter Two Twenty program. Again, we've seen an ongoing decrease in Chapter Two Twenty over the past several years. And actually, Wawatosa School District is no longer eligible to accept new students in our Chapter Two Twenty program because of the percentage of minority students that currently attend the Wawatosa School District. And I'll go into that a little bit later. But just breaking down the numbers, a hundred-and-ninety-six students. And then at the elementary level, fifteen, back on, fifty-nine students, thirty-seven at the middle school and a hundred at the high school. And then the final slide I put in here is just a little bit more about that Chapter Two Twenty, why we're no longer eligible. Once, Chapter Two Twenty is a program that is intended to promote, introduce transfer of minority students. So, non-minority students can, of the suburban school districts can enroll in MPS through Chapter Two Twenty, and then we accept only minority students into Wawatosa through the Chapter Two Twenty program. Once a district hits thirty percent overall minority enrollment, and that's any student attending your district. So, whatever our numbers are on that third Friday would suggest whether or not we're at thirty percent, you're no longer eligible to participate in the Chapter Two Twenty program. So, our students who are currently enrolled can continue, but we cannot accept any additional new students. And we haven't been able, we weren't able to last year and won't be able to next year as a result of our third Friday counts, the way that they're showing. So, there are districts over time that have been ineligible, then returned to eligibility and have been ineligible. I don't know what the trend is for Tosa because it's the first time we've entered that area. But I can tell you that there are more districts that are approaching that overall who participate in the Chapter Two Twenty program.
Ready for questions?
I am.
Okay. Anyone have questions, please? Seeing none? Thank you. Is there any comment on student services report? Seeing none, we will move into the superintendent's portion. Dr. Earl?
Thank you. Dave Prest is here as well as John Mack to discuss the Fisher Building and some plans that we have for the building. Plans goes back about four years when the school board made the decision to keep the Fisher Building. And since that time, we've had programs in different, the room we're sitting in has been renovated. The Montessori classrooms have been renovated, the Tosa School, the trades, we had a new roof put on. And what we're planning, the next step of the renovations and developing the asset would be the gym area and the HVAC systems in the building. So, I think it also relates to, somewhat to Mr. Beatty and the use of the gym, but I will get into that a little bit, and I'll turn it over and let Mr. Prest and Mr. Mack.
In the middle of August, we retained Epstein and Ewan Architectural Firm to prepare a floor plan for us to convert and renovate the gymnasium locker room area to meet the needs of the Montessori School, the rec department and the Wawatosa community. And they, in turn, used CG Schmidt as a general contractor who, in turn, brought numerous contractors through the building to examine the facility with an eye to giving us a, to prepare a budget for what it would take to renovate the gymnasium, restore the locker room, create gang bathrooms again, which would be usable for the entire lower level. And if we have our slides, ready to go with the slides, John?
Trying to get it up.
We have an overhead view in your handout, which is sort of a bird's-eye view of the Fisher site. And in that picture, you will see a blued-in area. And the area on the left, the smaller rectangle, is what was and will be the locker room. And I say what was because this building did have a locker room at the west end of the gymnasium. And the larger area there is the gymnasium itself. And you will see two rectangular boxes up on top of that roof. And those two boxes represent the air handling equipment for this entire lower level. The one on the left side deals with the west side of the building. So, if you're ever wondering where your air conditioning comes from when you're sitting here in the boardroom, it comes from the roof of the gymnasium. And the unit that you see in that picture on the east side of the gymnasium, that deals with, again, the east side of the building and the gymnasium space itself. The gymnasium space itself, if you've not been in there, is a rabbit maze of examining rooms. It is just all chopped up. And we aren't able to use the space as it's configured, but unfortunately, in order to air condition and heat the lower level here, we have to run that rooftop unit. So, we're, in essence, we're paying to maintain, you know, the environment in that space, but we're really not enjoying the benefit of it. And if you go to the second slide, and it'll be coming up shortly, I hope, on that one, you get a more detailed view. Of particular interest would be the locker room area, gang bathroom, I should say, because what is really important here, as we've developed the lower level, particularly the Montessori School, there is no boys' gang bathroom down here. It is around the corner and it is a two-stall bathroom. What once was a rather large boys' bathroom was chopped in half and it was turned into a girls' and a boys' lavatory. And so, we're, in terms of the occupancy levels of the lower level of this facility, and you do a fixture count, by code, we are required to provide so many fixtures. So, as we continue to develop the lower level here, we will need to increase the fixture count. And this renovation that would occur as part of the locker room would do that for us. And in addition to that, there would be a couple of showers and changing area that could be used by the community and the rec department for whatever activities they would program through here. One of the things that isn't shown in this slide is, well, it's shown as a wider corridor and it's identified as such. And what you don't see there is the little pigeon holes that have been removed. Because again, when you walk down the corridor behind us from the west to the east, you're walking down a narrow corridor similar to what you have in your home. And at one point, that was a generous twelve-foot wide corridor, as we have down here. And when the medical clinic was here, they began to occupy corridor space as a way of getting more examining rooms in. So, the intention would be to remove all of those little examining rooms that go from the west side to the east side. And that would open up the corridor. Again, that would be an enhancement to the lower level at large. It would provide a better egress path, better traffic flow, and just make the whole lower level more accessible to everybody at all ends of the building. And if you look with some detail in the locker room area, you will see that there are five fixtures in there in both the boys' and the girls', three sinks and two showers. So, that provides you some detail level. And in addition to the east side of the gymnasium, you will see that there is a multipurpose room there. And that multipurpose room is approximately the full width of the gymnasium and about twenty feet long. And its future use would be yet to be too determined. It could be used as a breakout room for rec department activities, aerobics, dance class, any number of activities that would be useful in a space of that size. Maybe I should wait for technology to catch up to me here. Maybe I should wait for technology to catch up to me here.
We do have them.
Okay. Keep moving?
Well, I mean, we do have the PowerPoint presentations.
In this third slide, we have some detail here about replacing the existing RTUs and some fire suppression, electrical, and a detail that isn't in here is also the plumbing. They say that kitchens and bathrooms are the most too expensive rooms in your house, and in order to put this locker room in, we're going to have to demolish the floor in that space and, you know, put the plumbing back into the room that formerly was in there. So the rooftop units, they're almost 30 years old. They were run 16 hours a day, roughly. They basically, because the medical clinic was here, at least on the east end, because of their emergency services, those units ran, have an awful lot of runtime on them. And they, they are, in the mechanical world, they would be described as near end of life. I mean, could we keep them going? Probably. But the difficulty with them is, is that, again, they are not very efficient, and they're also, they're exposed to the environment by being up there on the rooftop. There are sole means of heating and ventilating this space down here, and, you know, should one of those units fail in the middle of winter, you would lose heating and ventilating to half of the lower level of this building. So the duct work from these rooftop units is hanging like a spider web inside of the gymnasium. So if we're going to renovate the gym and make the gym usable space for basketball and other activities, you need the ceiling height, and you aren't going to get that with the rooftop units as they are currently configured. So the intention is to replace the rooftop units and bring the duct work off to the sides and then down the walls and redistribute it back out to the lower levels. One of the things that we're concerned about, that code is going to require us to provide a sprinkler system into the building. And the best estimate by both the general contractor and Epstein and Yuen is that a sprinkler system will likely be required by the state. And if that is to be the case, that adds cost to this project. Currently, the buildings and ground staff is engaged in the demolition in the space. We've removed the ceiling tiles, so if you were to take the tour over there, you could get a sense of the space that we would capture. It's rather exciting, but, you know, when you look up and you see the old basketball hoop still in place, and, and, you know, you see light coming in the windows from the front of the building, it gives you a vision of what the space could be, should we choose to do so. The total expenses in terms of just the mechanical costs to this project are about a half a million dollars. About $350,000 of that cost is for the replacement of the HVAC system. But again, the replacement of the HVAC system is, is an improvement that will enhance the entire lower level. It's an, it's an improvement that at some point, if we do nothing with the gymnasium, will be required in any way because the HVAC systems that are sitting there up on the roof at some point are going to need replacement. The HVAC systems are much larger than they need to be because the Montessori School and the trade school has their own ventilation equipment. And so the units could be downsized, and we would gain efficiencies there, and the units would be more modern, and so therefore, they would also be more efficient. And the fact that we wouldn't be heating and ventilating space that we can't use would be another benefit. So that's an overview of the detail level of what we've come up with in the last two months by examining this project. Do you have any questions?
Help me. Where do you anticipate the rec department could be?
I think that's part of the discussion, that we don't have that space planned yet, but the intent is to move the rec department over into this building. I think it'll be after we complete the gym and begin that work, but the space will be utilized.
And that's down in that corner over there, that direction?
That way.
Over there?
Right.
Okay.
So it will be, they'll begin programming, and programming during the day if, because it'll be available during the day to some degree, but also at night, right away. But the intent is to have the rec department moved over here.
Would the gym remain the size as it was when it was Fisher School, or will there be some enlargement?
The gym would remain the same size as it, as it was, which is, I thought you might ask the question. It is, the gym and the locker room combined is 7,015 square feet, and the gym itself is 4,517 square feet. And if you want that converted into a measurement, it is 42 feet wide and 72 feet long.
You have not defined anything at this point for the rec department area, correct?
No. No, we have not.
And that, I think, is good because as planning goes, there could be some changes, additions, looking to the future, what we might offer?
Correct.
Our focus is to renovate the facility for use by the Montessori School, the rec department, the community, and the whether, whether the rec department moves to Fisher Building or when the rec department moves to Fisher Building, in either eventuality, that doesn't have a bearing on this plan.
Is there any thought for area for seniors, aerobics class, or that something, services for seniors of the community?
Well, in terms of the facility, the breakout room that I spoke of, that would be on the east end of the gymnasium, what was formerly a stage area, that's the kind, that's the multipurpose room I was speaking of, that could be used for any kind of activity like that.
That, I think, would be a big plus for the community.
Well, and the gym, the type of programming could be done inside the gym as well.
And there's adequate parking space here?
Yes.
Okay. When do you, what is the timeline on this? Obviously, the Montessori School is in place, and it's so exciting to walk in to that door and see what, it's a school again. It's not just a facility, and that, that's so much, it's, a beautiful job has been done with the painting, the, it just, when you look out the window and see the campus from the Montessori School, it's, it's really exciting. So any?
The intent would be to have it completed for the start of next school year. So the work would begin in short order by, I believe, demolition by our own, our own people, and then the work would continue throughout that time.
And some of the work can still be done by our own people, correct?
We're going to do the demolition, the gutting of the existing space. And the timeline was that we would turn over a gutted space to the general contractor in February pending board approval.
So you'll have to move right along?
We have to move right along. We started last Friday. Regardless, again, the space is unusable to the district as it stands, so the way we see it is, is that whatever we're going to do with that space long-term, we need to remove what's there. I don't mean in any way to suggest that we've already decided what we're doing here, it's just that we need to, if we're going to use the space, we're, we need to move ahead to remove what's there. It's, it's actually, I hate to use the word dangerous, but it, it is, it is such a rabbit path in there. If you don't leave a trail of breadcrumbs when you go in there, you can't find the light switches to turn them off when you go out.
I trust all will go very well. Mrs. Randall?
Dr. Eardle, what are the immediate plans for use of the gym? Montessori and?
Montessori, the, and the rec department as well, will begin preparing to be able to program there right away. Part of the issue we have, and I think everybody knows that, is all of our, all of our gym space, it's kind of like all of our field space across the district and in the city, are constantly used. And when the school decides, the rec department uses the gyms quite often, and when the school has a night event, which is quite often, they get booted out of there, and they have to find alternative spaces. So this will just be another space that we'll have less limitations on for the rec department, certainly outside of the school hours, but including during school hours, because we right now have three sections of Montessori.
And we, we had had a presentation earlier when, when we decided to repair the roof. And I believe the discussion at that time was that we have committed to this building, and with the installation of the roof, we have really committed to this building, correct?
I would agree. I mean, I think the commitment was clear when the board decided well before that to say, keep the building, use it for programming. But the roof went on, and I think that was a clear financial commitment to keeping the building.
Yeah, I know we talked about that and about some of these other things. I, I'm just very excited about this. You know, when I think back to a time where it was almost sold, and now to, as Mrs. Weber said, to walk in here, and that three levels of the Montessori there are amazing, and I, there's a waitlist for that, isn't there?
Correct.
You know, that's only going to grow. But when you see the amount of activity going on in every part of this building and outside, I just, I think it's very exciting. And so, as Mrs. Weber said, I hope, I hope everything goes well.
It's interesting, as I think about this, how some of it's been done piecemeal, Brightlfield. That was the only thing we were looking at, Brightlfield. But how it's evolved, it's, it's, the puzzle is fitting together so beautifully, and I think that's a little bit of what you are saying, Mrs. Weber. It's exciting. Would it be unwise that calling the gym, new gym, a community center? Because it really will be used by the community, as all of our schools are. Is that an unfair title to give it?
We can call it whatever you would like. But I think, I think more so than any other gyms, it'll be more of a community, community use.
I think there are perhaps things going on that we don't even think about right now that could be a part of community service. Mr. Kroner?
This might be a minor point, but could we have Mr. Mack explain how we're going to pay for this?
Well, we'll get into that. Let's dream first, and we'll let Mr. Mack, he's smiling, he's not frowning, so, is there any other question? Yes?
I wanted to ask more questions about the actual gymnasium. Can you help me understand, with this size gym, what kind of programming can we offer? It's not just elementary school programming for this size gym for sports.
Well, this is a typical elementary school-sized gymnasium, so whatever offerings the rec department is able to, to provide in a typical elementary-style gym, they would also be able to do here. Evening volleyball is a very popular activity at, at the elementary schools. So certainly, that would be one of the many opportunities that would be available for the community, as well as providing, you know, physical education space for the Montessori School. We have a elementary school here, and we don't have a gymnasium for them. It's the only, it's the only one in the district.
And then the flooring in the gym, all of that is included?
The flooring is included.
Redoing the flooring and?
Yes, it is.
Any other kind of improvements that need to be made? I mean, I saw that in the quotation, the equipment is included. And then one other question on the elevator alternate. Can you tell me more about the elevator needed?
We're in the process of having the current elevator evaluated, and, you know, the possibility may exist to use it as a service elevator, but it, it wouldn't serve the needs of the staff, particularly ADA. So if we were going to put the elevator into service as, as a lift for people, we would need to renovate the elevator, which would mean a new car, new jack, and new controls. And the estimate, budget estimate for that was $133,000.
That's all I have. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Vee?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Weber, but I too am concerned about finances, so I'm going to ask a couple of questions. I don't mean to stop the dreaming. But I want to clarify first off. You said before that the plumbing was not included in these numbers?
No, the number, no, the plumbing is in the number. What I was getting at was in the half a million dollar estimate, half a million dollars roughly of the 1.1 million dollars is specifically for the mechanical systems. So I wanted to be able to frame, you know, when you look at, well, gee, we already have this space, why is it this much money? And it's because of the mechanical costs, and the mechanical costs will serve as a benefit to the entire lower level. It would be unfair to ascribe the cost of the mechanical improvements to that space to just that space. That was the point I was attempting to make. And of, if you wanted to break down the mechanical costs, about $350,000 of it is for the rooftop ventilation equipment, $40,000 was for the plumbing, and about $125,000, $130,000 was for the electrical work that would be required.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. I would ask that we go through this slide, because the way I read this, and I want to make sure I'm doing that properly, you plan to use our fund balance. Is that accurate, or do you plan to ask us to increase the levy?
Let me just go through that one. The funding for this would go according to what I have here. We were under budget in the Fund 41 capital improvement fund that we use for the, for the improvements every year, and we have about $371,000. The vast majority of that money that was left over, a big piece, $200,000 came from Lincoln, where they redid the asphalt. And Bruce Johnson had put more money into that in case the subsoil was not in good condition. It was. It wasn't like Madison. Madison, they had to dig out all the subsoil and redo it. So that project came in under. And then the masonry repair at Jefferson, the way I understand it, it was not as big as anticipated. Our own staff took care of the issue, and that saved $160,000. So basically, there's $371,000 in our budget already to carry over and go to this project. I put in there a total of 1.3 million, and that includes a $100,000 contingency that the district, that Bruce wanted in there. There's also a contingency for the contractor, too, in there, so there could be $200,000 extra in there. What would happen with this, because we want to do it on Fund 41 and not Fund, you know, Fund 10, I would actually levy more into Fund 41 this year, because I get the amortization schedule spread out probably over 10 years. So it's only going to affect our net shared cost going to aid by about $100,000 or $130,000 a year, which is a big advantage. So basically, what I'd do is flip-flop, and I'd use the fund balance then just to pay one time, just one time expense. That's what the fund balance would be used for, $935,000, and that's actually carryover from this year's budget. So I would just put the levy into Fund 41, and then Fund 10, I would just decrease that levy, because you're under the revenue cap there. So it would be $935,000 into Fund 10, and then what I would propose is, I'm not too sure, based on the discussions I've had, that the sprinkler system will be needed for sure. It could be, and... It, it could be, and it may not be, because we did not have to put it in when we did the space down here. If they make us do it, what I would propose to do, we have $659,000 left in Fund 49, which is a sale from Hawthorne, and if it's needed, I would propose using 350 out of the 659,000. I'll still leave $300,000 in there as a contingency fund, and that's if it's needed. So I'm putting contingency money, contingency use together, and then basically, the fund balance used for the whole other piece to remodel the gymnasium area and the locker rooms would be coming from, carryover from this year's budget.
All right, thank you. I, I have to say, I understand that we need to do some of this. The HVA systems obviously are going to fail at some point and need to be addressed. We now have 60 students down here, and they need proper facilities for their physical needs. But as far as the gym goes, I sort of have the feeling of we're being asked to build it, and then they'll come. I, I don't know exactly, other than the Montessori use, if this is necessary, and we're in a time of tight budgets, and I am concerned that this is how we're going to choose to spend our money. And that's all I have for now.
Could I ask, please, Mr. Kroner to, he originally asked questions. Could you ask further questions at this point, if you have any, or?
Yes, thank you. Not sure I followed you correctly on the fund balance switching, so I'm going to ask a simpler question, maybe for citizens to understand, are property taxes going to go up in order to build this?
No, the limit is the limit, the revenue limit, we cannot exceed that. Basically, what I'm doing, it, it, the Fund 41, if you did not use it, the levy would just be in Fund 10, and so what I'm just putting more money into a different piece of the pie, that's all I'm doing with that.
Okay. My feeling at this point is similar to Mrs. Fee. I, we've not really given any information, the documents why we need this gym. We've heard that the middle schools and elementary schools are crowded as far as use goes, but we have 17 approximately gymnasiums in the district, including all the gymnasiums. And I, you know, before we spend a million and a half dollars, I'd like to see some kind of report or study that shows we actually need it. And other than just a few statements here that people get bumped on a night when there's too much going on, that's not enough for me. So for a project this magnitude one, I would like to see more, more complete report on what the actual need for this renovation is. I do believe if we have to, you know, we did commit to this building, and if we need to do the, the air conditioning and heating system, you know, that's an important thing to do. And if we can do it in a way that would allow us to renovate the gym in the future if we need to, or decide to do that, then that, you know, that's a prudent way to go. The other thing that bothers me about this, quite a bit actually, is this is another project, and a very major one, that's presented to us completely out of context. We don't know how this fits in with the capital improvement budget for next year, and that's always full of several million dollars of projects that are considered very important. We don't know how this fits in the context of the overall budget for next year, and to me, that's troubling. If we're going to compare expenditures, you know, we have some important things to consider. Are we identifying our at-risk students, and do we want to put more funds towards rescuing them? Or are we going to develop a compensation plans that we want to put more funds towards compensation for teachers? You know, there's some very important decisions to make, and this is sort of, seems to me to be taken out of all of that and put into its own little bubble, and we're supposed to make a decision, then all the other financial things that are going to happen are going to happen later in the year. So I would kind of like, before we go forward with this, at least to have some of those other issues considered at the same time, to see, is this the best use for the funds that we have? Or would it might be more important to gear more of those towards student learning?
Well, just keep in mind, though, that these are one-time funds, so if you think about putting it towards compensation, and it could be gone in two years and you set yourself up for a cliff, and that's, you don't want to really do that with one-time funds. You want to use it for a one-time purpose.
I understand that, but it's still a gigantic expenditure, completely out of context, with the other budgetary decisions we have to make. The other thing I want to know is, part of this was, part of the reason offered for this is to give the Montessori students a gym to work in. And the only reason that troubles me a little bit is I don't remember seeing a budget for a gym in the Montessori budget that we got last, last year. I mean, it was about $500,000, and we were going to break even on that, but if we had put another half a million dollars in there to build a gym, I'm not sure if that would have gone forward at that time, so I'm a little surprised to see this now. So my question about that is, what other options were considered for giving the Montessori students gym space? For example, what about busing them to a neighborhood elementary gym twice a week for gym experience? That that would seem to be relatively inexpensive and allow us to use this money for other important needs in the district. Were other options considered?
What we're doing now is what we said we would do. So they're outside, they'll be outside in the winter, they'll be in the room right next door. So yes, other options were considered.
So as far as gymnasium space, though?
No, we weren't going to use it initially. Anything with gymnasium space, that wasn't part of the planning.
But I mean, as far as going forward, is, what about other options about renting a bus twice a week to take them to a local school for their gym experience?
I, I don't think that's reasonable.
Because?
Because we're busing, busing them out. I think we have, we would have costs associated with that, we have loss of instructional time, and it just doesn't seem reasonable to, to do that.
Mary Jo?
Are you done?
That's fine, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, just in response to a couple of comments, I, I don't see that this as being built for the Montessori school. You know, the fact that we have the Montessori school here is obviously a part of the reason for having it, and it's important. The bigger, the bigger issue, and it seems to be the bigger issue all the time when, when we get recommendations from administration, are that we've had some discussion about this building in general, we had some figures given to us for all of the different things that need to be done. We gave a vote of confidence to keeping this building, and, and I guess the other part that hasn't been discussed tonight is how much more of an asset this building will be once this work is done, and we need to think of that as well. We have the building, it's ours, and if we can improve it and make it worth more at the same time that we're using it, to me, that makes sense. And Mrs. Fee said something about, you know, build it and they will come, and it reminds me of the Wilson School argument from years ago, that, that neighborhood was just going to empty of children, and, and that school building, you know, would not exist, and we see every year now our resident enrollment increasing. We see administration finding creative and meaningful learning opportunities for kids in these facilities that we have. So maybe there is a little bit of, you know, build it and they will come, but, but yeah, this is what we do. This is what we do. We look for ways to provide opportunities. And again, we have this building, and to have it half-finished or whatever. And again, I think it's very significant, Mr. Mack, you're pointing out this is a one-time expenditure, and as nice as it would be to think that, you know, 1.3 million would make a huge dent in any of our upcoming ongoing expenses, I think we all know that's, that's not going to happen. But again, this, this makes the building more valuable. But again, and I, I'm going to repeat one more time, that we, we lead administration, you know, along a path, and when they come back then with a recommendation, I think that it's, it's not fair to act as though it came out of nowhere and it's a big surprise. And, and this happens a lot on this board.
Other comments or questions? Dr. Riddle, do you have any further comment?
Well, just our plan is to, to include this in, in the budget, and if there's concerns about it, certainly the, the motions can be made to remove it from the budget, but our intent was to, to move forward on it. I think it's important to note that when we look at overall budgeting, and this planning wasn't done overnight, we've been talking about it, and I know I've mentioned at board meetings that the gym, to renovate the gym at this point, because there was beams that needed to be moved, I recall a number of conversations, that it was going to be over a million dollars to do that, without saying that we weren't going to do it. But I think this is the opportunity that we have. I don't think it's out of context with the rest of our, our plans, otherwise, certainly John Mack would not be sitting in front of the board saying, this is a wise expenditure of money, and Dave would not be here and working with Bruce as well and saying, this is an unwise approach to take on renovating this building, and I wouldn't be here talking about it and saying that it's not going to be used. I'm extremely confident, I do have a spreadsheet that was put together by the rec department with the entire listing of all the programs, the gyms, and the spaces. So that was used administratively to, to look at it and say, we need more space. It wasn't just out of the blue to think, let's put a gym and see if people will use it. But that's the basis of where we're at on this.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Kroner?
When this comes forward, will it come forward in the context of the capital improvement budget that we normally see in the fall, improve?
No, it'll come forward in the, the actual budget recommendations.
So we won't see it again until spring?
No, you'll see it this month, the end of this month, for the October budget.
Okay, so you're adding it to this year's budget?
Correct.
Yes, Sharon?
Just a question as a follow-up to that, is, is our next meeting the levy meeting? Or October, how does that?
We, we don't know.
The final levy?
We don't know it yet. Next, next Friday, I'll find out.
Okay.
And we'll set the dates.
Okay, just curious. I mean, I knew it was coming up, October.
Fourteenth, this Friday.
Okay. I mean, I know there's a lot in flocks and...
This, this doesn't affect the, affect the levy either way. I would just go back...
Right, I know what you're doing.
Yeah, I'd just go back, and because I didn't get to comment on the whole project to the whole, but I think I look at this as a continuation of, we made a decision, or the school board made a decision, to put the roof on this building, and at a point in time, we were thinking of selling this building, and we said, no, let's, let's stay in this building, put, put the roof back on. So you made an investment in the roof, and we made an investment then, because quite honestly, just the Montessori school, I don't, you know, we started with this boardroom, and then the Montessori school was a brainchild idea that came alive that said, hey, let's, let's add a Montessori school, thus this space was renovated. I think this is just a continuation, because that area of the building, I've been in there a number of times, it's all spaghetti up there. It's just, when, when Harwood had this clinic, they put all the HVAC down in the gym, it's got wires and stuff just all over the place in there. So you, you have a whole chunk of this building that's just being heated for no use whatsoever. And to me, you put the gym in there, you're going to have rec department programs in there, you can have community programs in there, it'll be used on a continuous basis. I don't see any waste with that, using that, that piece of that base out. Because the rec department cannot even get into the elementary school, because the schools are using those gyms all the time after school. They would absolutely love to be able to use this for volleyball, basketball, aerobics classes, any type of recreational classes. They could probably split it in half, and use half the gym for one class, half for another class with an expandable door. I think the Montessori school using it just because they're in this building, that, that's just coincidental, quite honestly. I think it's just a continuation of finishing this building off as an asset to the district. And as we move forward, if the funding gets worse, we may never get this chance again. And quite honestly, the HVAC system is at the end of its useful life. So that cost maybe could be double anyway, if you don't, if you say, no, I don't want to touch the gym stuff, I just want to fix all the HVAC stuff, so then it maybe goes up from 500 to a million dollars anyway. I don't know, I don't know what will happen with that. But the HVAC is at the end of its useful life.
Sharon?
Well, the way I look at it is, we definitely have to make some improvements here, and those improvements are improvements that we make in all of our buildings. Wauwataosa has had a longstanding record of making sure that our buildings are, are improved. We have three schools currently being serviced in this building, we have staff development. Now that we are holding, we're hosting even other districts in opportunities for learning. So I would just want to say again, the board just borrows this room, because really, this is, you know, what you've done in here, for example, is really just improving it. So to me, if we need to put in new sprinklers so that we can keep people safe and kids safe, if we have to redo the HVAC and, and all, make all the other improvements, I mean, there are things that we must do with the programs that we have. And if we can improve programming along the way, you know, it's, it's something that we have to take a look at. So I would say, you know, bring it to us in, in the next budget cycle, and, and let us see, you know, how it, how it finally comes together. You know, I'm not a, I'm not sure about some of the additional things, like the elevators and, and things like that. I think we have to have a...
Yeah, I think...
More of a discussion, I think, within your group on that.
Right, I think what happened is, we wanted to get the main, the main piece of the building improved, and the elevator could be part of another capital improvement plan coming forward. And that would depend on the needs, how much it's used, if it's needed to go up and down, because you could take that elevator from being a maintenance elevator into a regular elevator for additional cost, and then kids could ride up and down from floor to floor.
Well, I mean, I'm, I, I don't, you know, know all the scenarios that could happen, but I, I'm certain that we probably, we might have to have, you know, ADA accessibility whenever we do modifications to our buildings, and maybe this is going to be a necessary expense in order to, to be able to have, you know, children transported. So, I mean, and, and then we should consider that. Whatever, whatever we need to do, we should consider it and, and figure out how we're going to, how we're going to make it happen, if that's what we choose to do, and even if we have to do it in phases, you know, I'm open to, to looking at how to do this in phases. If the permits allow us to do that, I don't, you know, I don't know, once you start renovating and, and pulling permits and seeing what's, what has been modified that you don't know about when you pull things apart, I mean, it, it's going to, we're going to have a variance there, which is why they're building in that $200,000, I think, right?
Our staff, when we did these projects, we took care of most of what I would refer to as the code violations by, in the process of our demolition, we were able to remove the sins of the Father. And there was spaghetti of nests of wire and plumbing, and, and the demolition process took care of that. The value estimated by C.G. Schmidt was somewhere between 70 and $100,000 to our doing the demolition over there. So it gives you a vision of, you know, what we were able to accomplish in the spaces that we have already renovated. So some of the issues like ADA compliance or the sprinkler system, those are, those are compliance issues that will be dealt with from the state.
Yes, Mr. Kroner?
Mr. Mack, if we did this in stages, and we just did the HVAC system first for $500,000, what, how much of the funds would be available for other capital improvement projects? Would it be 800,000, or would it be a smaller amount?
The HVAC is 350, I just don't want to confuse anybody with the numbers.
I thought you said it was 350 plus 150,000 for the mechanical cost?
The mechanical cost would be plumbing and electrical, so the total... So the total mechanical cost, I just want clarity, that's all.
So then if we spent 350,000 on the HVAC, does that mean we have a million dollars for other capital improvement projects if we don't build the gym?
If we don't do the gym, because we're doing, actually, we're doing this just using fund balance. We're not, we're not, the money we set aside for Fund 41 on an annual basis is running around 1.4 million. That's going to stay the same no matter what. Because we have to keep maintaining our buildings to make them, being able to use them. And so to keep them, because they are old, we have to put that amount into them every single year. That's never going to change as we go forward. In fact, it'll probably have to go up a little bit over time. This is one time. And that's what I said, it's using, on balance, using Fund 49 balance to basically finish this building and make it an asset completely. Otherwise, it may never get done. But if that's a decision that you make, I just came up with a finance scheme for this. And we moved forward with the directive to finish this off. So that's why we came with this whole proposal.
So who would we look to then for the recommendation as to whether remodeling the gym part of it takes a higher precedence over the other critical capital improvement projects that we've talked about on a continuing basis?
I don't think it's an issue of priorities. I mean, it's both. For next year, we're going to do the 1.4 million dollars capital improvements and this project as well. So it's not an issue of which one's a priority. We're saying that we believe this is a priority over different one-time expenditures. I mean, if we wanted to go buy, redo another parking lot or something like that, above and beyond the 1.4 million, this is outside of that. So it's not an either-or prioritization in how we're approaching it.
I understand what Mrs. Randall said earlier about moving down a certain path. But also, what's missing from this presentation is the other one-time expenditures that were considered and why you're choosing this over others. I mean, it would be helpful for me to see, you know, where else would we spend this money one time that might be beneficial for the district? And why are we choosing this over something else?
Mary Jo?
I guess I can tell you what I heard, why the recommendation is coming. It's, other work has to be done, and it's economical to do it at the same time. We've committed and put a new roof on the building. The building will become a greater asset. And it will provide opportunities for our students and our community. That's my understanding of why administration brought this forward. Now, with anything that comes forward, you could ask them, you know, "What other million things could we do with that money?" But we are hearing clearly why they are recommending it. And so, you know, we have a decision to make. You know, if we believe it's a good recommendation, if we believe that it'll improve this asset that we already have, if we believe we can offer more opportunities, if we believe everything we're being told, if we trust that we have a business manager and other administrators who, whose job and whose goal is to look for ways to improve the district, you know, that's how we make our choice, that's how we make our decision. But I don't think it's realistic to, you know, say, "What else could we do with a million dollars?"
Yes?
Just to clarify, it's a bit of a mischaracterization of my statement to say, "What other million things could we do with this money?"
No, it isn't.
I think that's a bit disrespectful. I think when we're talking about spending 1.3 million dollars, it's not unreasonable to ask for a piece of paper that shows a study, "Here's what we could spend this money on, here's what we chose, and here's why we chose it over these other five things." Simply to be told, "We did that study, and this is what we're telling you we'd like to do," is not enough for me. This is a governmental organization, we're spending taxpayers' money. It's not too much to ask that we get at least some kind of report saying, "Here's the option that we're recommending, and here are the other four or five options that we considered, and why we're not moving forward with those recommendations." So that's a very reasonable way to approach budgeting and spending tax money.
Mary Jo's?
Just a point, Dave. You've given us a budget, an overall budget. And inside that overall budget, you've identified $350,000 for an HVAC system that's shot. What we don't know, and I can tell you, it's shot. 30-year-old rooftops are done. You'll, I don't want to use my vernacular here, but you'll spend a lot of money trying to keep those things running. It'd be a waste of money. But what we haven't identified is the portion of the electrical that goes with the rooftops, the portion of the plumbing that goes with the rooftops, the portion of the general contracting that goes with the rooftops. So it's been identified as $350,000 simply for HVAC. It may end up being a $700,000 or $800,000 thing for HVAC. And you've got no benefit, other than a new HVAC system, for another 200,000, you get a gym.
I have a very specific budget detailing report by C.G. Schmidt. And my understanding of that presentation was, is that the $350,000 is all encompassing all costs of the HVAC. The electrical feed that goes to the rooftop currently comes out the wall at about 10-foot height and goes straight up another 20 feet. What they're going to do is just rebend that conduit, come up the sidewall, go over and feed the rooftop. So the feeders are in place. So the electrical costs to move the feeder, to get it out of the gym space, were included in the cost of the HVAC system. So the HVAC, the budget estimate at $350,000 includes all work that would be associated with replacing the HVAC system.
Including the general contracting, we're taking the walls and the ceilings down so they get at the ductwork.
We're taking the walls and the ceiling down.
And nothing goes back up?
Correct. I mean, because the gym would be an open space at the end of the day.
But there has to be corridor walls, there has to be fire separation to the corridor walls. You have that. I'm just asking if you evaluated the whole thing. We've got numbers rolling around here. We're trying to wrestle with numbers. It seems to me our numbers are part of a hole. We've isolated them as part of this hole. But when you pull it out, it might not be that number.
I believe it to be that number, that the $350,000 would be an HVAC system complete. And the plumbing in total was $40,000. Whether or not the plumbing part of the plumber's contract fee is included in the HVAC installation for a drain line off the condensate or something like that, I don't know that that would matter at this point. You know, that would be a very small piece of the HVAC install.
Okay, I guess that's all.
Further questions or comments? Okay. Do you wish to say anything else to conclude here?
No.
I would just ask the question that, if we don't do this, what are we going to do with the space?
Dave, wouldn't you say this space? Would you go just a little bit further with that? You mean this lower level?
Well, no, I meant the gymnasium locker room space in the sense of if we don't do this project, you know, what is going to change a year from now or five years from now?
Excuse me, Mr. Crowler?
My immediate response is, why do we have to do something with it right now? And what might change three to five years from now is the economy. And so, and I'm not saying at this point I'm dead-set against the project, but I have to be convinced it's the right way to go. I can't just have someone say, "We looked at these things, and this is what we want to do." I mean, it's always a competition for where to spend the money that's in the best interest of the students in the district. And to me, so far, building a gymnasium, if we're focused on student learning, I haven't been convinced yet or been shown anything that this is the best use of the money for the students in the district. If you can show that to me, then I will support it.
It's good to get all questions on the table. And I think that's what you're speaking to right now. And it gives, it answers a little bit of your question, I think. Is there any further question or comment? If not, thank you. Good discussion. Thank you, Dave, for the work you've done, and certainly, John.
If in the week ahead you have any questions relative to detail on this, feel free to give me a call.
Thank you. And Mr. Mack, I'm assuming you're going to stay right in that chair?
I can walk through, I know the board is aware of the covenant settlement from, lawsuit with the city. And the city did lose that lawsuit and was required to pay 1.4 million dollars to cover the costs. There is a portion of it, roughly $2 million, that is going to be charged back to the school district. We've had a number of discussions with city administration. It's the best way to do it. There's two different options that we could have. One is that we pay it. Or the other one is that we can levy that amount, roughly $2 million. And at this point, it looks like what the city is wanting to do is to loan the money to the school district because of a TIF that's going to be going off in 2015. The approximate proceeds that we'll be receiving at that time is $3.2 million. And what we will probably recommend to the board, and really, at this point, there's no recommendation because things have not been finalized at the city. I just wanted to give you an update of the discussions that have taken place to this point. But recommending not to levy, not to increase the levy by $2 million to make that money up, but to allow the city to pay it. And then out of the proceeds in 2015, we would pay back that amount and would receive the rest. The only issue that might be out there is capitalized interest over time. The city administrator, myself, and Mr. Mack have had some discussions about the difference between a city dollar and a school district dollar. And if we're in negative aid, the cost to the taxpayers is really more for a school district dollar than a city dollar. And obviously, that's complex. But to try to simplify it, we're working through, to try to find the best way for the taxpayers of Wauwatosa to deal with that. So we'll continue the conversations. The city is going to be working through their approval process. And then we will have a recommendation for the school board at some point in the near future to address it.
Mr. Mack, do you have anything to add?
No, just simply, I guess the only thing I would add is that we're not going to tax for that amount. And we're hoping that the city would, we've been trying to work out some arrangement where they've already paid the debt off. And perhaps there'd be a way that we can give them an assignment to our share of the TIF distribution when it comes out in 2014 or 2015. And in return, they would just assume that. And if there's anything left from the TIF payment, they would distribute that money then to us if there's anything left. Because the way, I understand that there's probably going to be enough from the TIF to pay off the entire debt. So my hope is that we could do this very easy and just have the city assume our debt formally. And we, in return, give them our rights to the TIF disbursement money that will be coming off. It's not that difficult. It's just a matter of how the city wants to structure the deal more than anything. And that's why I said, Dr. Erdl, we had a couple of conversations with the city. And I believe Dr. Erdl has been speaking with Mr. Archambault regarding how to get this done.
Board members, yes. Mary Jo?
Is there any question about our liability? That we definitely do have liability?
Yes, I guess, I guess there is. I mean, in theory, I mean, it's, the city could unilaterally just tax, you know, give us a chargeback. And we, in return, would have to be forced to tax to get that money back. I don't think the city will do that. But we have to come up with some alternate resolution to avoid that scenario.
Okay, and could I ask, the next time that you present on this, could you maybe have some kind of little handout about the TIFs and how those work?
Oh.
And why we would be doing, I mean, I know an overview, but if you could...
A TIF is simply, actually, what the city does is to encourage development of land. If a company, say, wanted to move in, or a number of companies, what the city does is they take a raw piece of land or a piece of land that's going to be redeveloped. And the city pays for the improvements, like roads, water, sewers, everything of that nature. And they get the area ready for the businesses. In return, instead of going on the tax rolls right away, the city takes out debt to accomplish that TIF. And then they put all those improvements in. Then when the companies move in there and build their companies, or like they're doing at the county grounds, what happens is, instead of paying taxes, that money is off the tax rolls and pays off the TIF debt that the city took off first. And then when that debt is completely paid off, then the city dissolves the TIF and puts the money back onto the tax rolls. And the equal, I mean, the assessed and equalized value of the entire city goes off. So it's a way that, any city can do it, and they do it quite often. It's simply an encouragement for businesses to come and locate in your city or town or municipality.
So when you say, "When it's up," so then there's a specific amount of time?
Right.
And then, but normally, the school district isn't involved in any of these, right?
Right, exactly.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think Sharon hit her head up also, would you?
Well, that was my question about the TIF. I don't know that much about them. Your explanation seems reasonable, but if there's another way that I can understand how it would work for the school district, since it's not a normal process for a school district? That would be helpful, yeah.
A school district, when, you mean a school district creating a TIF?
No, just the idea of, in this case, the debt, the school district's debt is the improvement, correct? If I'm following the logic of the TIF, that the city would take a loan out for?
No, they're two separate transactions. The TIF really doesn't have anything to do with the lawsuit.
More information, okay. Be any more information?
It's just a financing, it's a way to finance the debt. Because the TIF is up in 2015, and I think the conservative estimate is 9.7 million dollars that it will raise. And that gets distributed amongst all the taxing authorities, M.A.T.C., Milwaukee County, Wauwatosa School District, and the City of Wauwatosa. So that's a separate piece. That's just the funding mechanism to pay off the debt. So that's how they, the city actually paid the 8.7 million out of reserves in different areas that they, I'm not sure exactly how they paid it, but they paid it off, and they're going to use, rely on different mechanisms within that TIF and other ways that they have. But just for our portion of it, the two-point, the roughly $2 million of how that would be paid off, we're looking at saying, "Let's take our proceeds from when that TIF is up in 2015." And that's how the funding would cover. So they're two separate pieces. The covenant lawsuit has nothing to do with development of a TIF. We actually do have a vote on the creation of a TIF when they do it.
Okay, so this is where I'm trying to connect the dots. So I understand now, the TIF is the pool of money?
The refund, yeah.
It's a refund? It's a debt, isn't it a loan? Isn't the TIF a loan?
No.
Well, no, the TIF is a tax incremental financing district. It's simply, it's a term they give for taking a piece of property. And they call that the district. And what the city needs to borrow debt to put the roads and the sewers in there. So they borrow money. And then, instead of the taxes being paid to the, you know, to the underlying taxing jurisdiction, they go to the city who just paid off the debt. So it's not on the tax rolls until the debt is completely paid off. Then what happens is, once the debt is paid off, the city releases the TIF. It becomes part of the assessed and equalized value. And theoretically, if it was a big enough TIF, it would lower everybody's taxes just slightly. Because now they're going to pay a portion of the taxes. The ironic thing in Wauwatosa is it's a catch-22 because the city is negative tertiary, I mean, the school district is negatively aided. So what, the TIF itself being released would increase the amount of aid we could lose. It would increase our negative aid ratio from getting our equalization aid. But the only way that kicks in for the school district is if our spending exceeds the secondary ceiling limit in the equalization aid formula. We've been hovering just below... We've been hovering just below that. But in, I don't know what's going to happen in the future. So it is possible, that's why Dr. Erdl had said that, there's less risk if the city actually pays the debt than if the school district for the taxpayer. Because there is a chance we could go into negative aid. And if it was 70 cents, every dollar we would spend would cost a taxpayer a dollar 70. Or if the city just does, it would cost the taxpayer only a dollar, for sure. And that's why it would be better if the city just paid that, that off.
I guess to, to simplify, because TIFs are complicated.
Yes.
We will be getting, the city in 2015 will owe us 3.2 million, conservative estimate. Doesn't matter where it comes from. The city will be giving us that money. And that's the money that we will then pay off this, this debt, plus we'll have some additional. We assume we're going to have some additional if, if the TIF plays out and the, all their calculations and all the land development and the properties and the taxing, there's a whole mess that goes behind that we don't need to worry about because that's city issues and how they tax and everything else. We just know that at the end of that TIF, we're going to get roughly, let's just call it 3 million, even be more conservative. And that will pay off this debt. But I can get you some more information on TIFs that you might want to read up on.
I would, I really do need to understand them better. And then what I would like to see also is what are the risks that we may need to consider in going that route? You said that there, if we did go that route, there would be a board vote?
Right.
And what would be the risks? Thank you.
Crowder?
I'm fine, thank you.
Oh, you got your-
No question.
Oh, okay, thank you. Don't want to descend, anyone? Okay. Anything else that we need to add to that? Is there any communicate, excuse me, community comment on these items? See, no one. Is there any further comment on non-agenda items this evening? If not, move adjourn.
Second.
Mrs. Fee moved it. Mr. Gerow's second. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Fee?
Yes.
Mr. Gerow's?
Yes.
Mr. Crowder?
Yes.
Mrs. Muehlfeld?
Yes.
Mrs. Randall?
Yes.
Mrs. Weber?
Yes.
Thank you.